Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town Council meeting for May 7th at the Harvey Hearing Room. Please all rise. Councilor Boncorie, please lead justice to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilor Edman.
Here.
Councilor Calla.
Present.
Councilor McCorry.
Here.
Councilor Serto.
Yeah.
Councilor Frino.
Yes.
Councilor Conti.
Present.
Vice President Lutiering.
Yes.
President Beckham.
Present. I want to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 16, 2019 Town Council meeting.
So moved.
Second. Second. All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, one of them is abstained for.
One abstention?
Yeah.
Do you want abstention as well?
I have one for the 16th.
The 16th, yeah.
Two. Two abstentions.
Yep.
Public comment. Mr. Riley.
We have two of them, yeah.
You have two.
I'm sorry.
You have the April 23rd special meeting as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And April 23rd.
Yeah, that was.
Well, then I should have not abstained from the 16th because I was here. I wasn't here for the 23rd. So.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of 23rd.
Second. Okay. All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That I abstain from.
I have that, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Town Manager. Thomas?
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Thomas Riley, Cottage Park Road. I want to talk to you tonight about the ongoing saga of the boundary line of Senate Business District. We've been through an awful lot of this. I put together some material that I think comes up of something that had already concluded by two town officials as to where the boundary line is concerned. I think they, it shows that the residents on Cottage Park Road have been in a business district, in a residential district since 1937. So I put together, I put down some attachments that are, I left them at your places tonight. When you look at the zoning map from 1937, take a look at the shape of the districts. If you look at the corner of Somerset Avenue and Cottage Park Road, you'll see a little bit of a triangular piece of property, a zone business. Across the street is zone business. And that, the business district proceeds, I think, in almost an easterly direction and then downs, down to the south. I've shown you where 20 Cottage Park Road is on this site. That wasn't even built at the time, but that area is zone business. The next is a copy of a map that was done by the Sandown Company. It shows a detailed plot plan of each particular piece of property. Again, I ask you to take a look at that triangular piece of property across the street at the business zone and then the property going around there. That property on the opposite side from the triangular piece of property goes around the houses at Cottage Park Road. The Ferentz's house at 20 Cottage Park Road, my house, and several others going up that side of Cottage Park Road. The next one is a copy of, an attachment that went to an opinion that Joseph Harvey sent to the Board of Appeals, some probably, somewhere around 1971. The people that had owned that triangular piece of property were looking for a variance to open up some kind of manufacturing matter down there. Mr. Harvey showed the area indicated to the Board of Appeals that shouldn't grant a variance, but mapped out where the residential areas and where the businesses are. If you take a look at that and you look at the configuration of the triangular piece of property and the property around the street, you'll see the same pattern, the same, the same kind of dimensions. The next one would be the zoning map. They really don't have a very good copy of it, but if you take a look at it, you'll see the triangular piece of property, the same configuration, the same curvature of the posses around the residential districts. Then I took a look at the excesses map, just to show the parcel layout. The color is mine, but it shows a location of the business districts relative to the homes at 23 Cottage Park Road and at 20 Cottage Park Road. In January 1918, Town Manager Terrence Delahanty completed an extensive review of the CPB boundary. He determined that no homes on Cottage Park Road and Bartlett Road are in the Senate Business District. On April 8th of this year, Town Building Commissioner Albert Leggie ruled that the property at 1026 Somerset Avenue was adjacent to the residential eight district. Despite these clear decisions, some town officials continue to ignore the obvious. Source of all the doubt goes back to this egregious, whether it was intentional or inadvertent, misrepresentation of the Senate Business District and the Senate Business District Master Plan. The town, even after the Town Manager and Building Commissioner reviews, continues to make the dubious claim that the boundary is in doubt. You've set off on this expensive, I think needless, costly review of where the boundary is, but the real problem is, the source of the problem was the, was the map in the master plan. But we consult, we've asked, we've hired as a consultant, the very same firm that drew that map to try and resolve the problem. They're not coming, they're not going to come back and tell you that this thing is erroneous, wrong, and so forth. Instead, at the planning board meeting last week, we got a whole series of blurry things talking about the street and zoning map combined with Mass GIS AutoCAD file, the street and zoning map. A suggestion for a revised boundary. Now the consultant is saying, oh, when you don't like the boundary, we're gonna, Tom, you don't like the boundary? We're gonna move it past your house. So they've included my house in the boundary, within the boundary. You know, if the Red Sox had a hard time hitting, they wouldn't move for a space back 15 feet. You know, I just think, you know, this whole controversy started when the developer came in, wanted to build more than two and a half stories. It's zoned for two and a half stories. We've been, we've been coming out with every kind of an excuse, every kind of way to obscure this thing, instead of, instead of accepting what Terry Delahanty did and what the Building Commissioner did. They've told you where the boundary line is. I think all you have to do is the right line that conforms to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Oh, opposition?
Yes.
Oh, sure. Hi, Betty Pivelli. I would like to just talk about the parks.
Hmm?
From a beautification standpoint and from a citizen's standpoint. We have really nice parks and a lot of them have been renovated, most of them have been renovated, and we're really fortunate to have that happen. But there is, there, on Crest Ave Park and Pond Street Park and Haniford Park, there is some damage that needs to be fixed. So there's erosion at Crest Ave Park, there's a damaged basketball court at Pond Street, and the damage from the wedding reception last year at Haniford is still not fixed.
Is that recent?
This, no. Well, this is last year at Haniford, and the damage is still there. This is.
So the picture was recent?
No, actually, I should, should have had the more recent picture, but I just.
You're saying they didn't?
It's still not fixed.
Okay.
Okay? This is erosion at Crest Ave Park. Wait, there's another one. This is erosion that needs to have these little barriers put around. And this is the damaged basketball court at, at Pond Street. So I've talked, I've spoken to Steve Cowell and the DPW people, so they know, but I just think it's been a very long time, and I think that we have really nice parks, and I think people need to use them appropriately and appreciate them. And so when they look better, then people hopefully will take care of them.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Betty.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes?
Jack Dowd, Precinct 3. I appreciate Mr. Riley's comments. I'm sorry that he has to go through all of this. I don't know where it's gonna end, but I hope it does end soon. I apologize for not doing more for you, Mr. Riley. I'd like to go back to 2012 or 13, I guess, when this master plan was given by Delta Project or the Mass group to the town. I've done some research myself, and I did research last year on Eagle Side Park. It was refuted, my research was refuted by this board that said there was 13 acres to be protected as parkland at Eagle Side Park. Mr. Beckham, if you're on stage, has said that the town could develop 7.55 acres. The recent meeting with the Planning Board mentioned that there is possibly 2.15 acres to be used the way the town wants to use it, outside of the 13 acres designated as parkland since 1902. There was some other research. The research I've done is with the Winter Town Center Zoning, it was done by Jim McCann. And then the most recent research includes excerpts from the Senate Business District, zoning law memo, which was done by Jordan Moll, Hudson Asher, and Howard last year at this time. I've looked up in the newspaper, where it says in this 2012, and I'm reading now, development principles were discussed and endorsed at a public forum in December 2012. So I looked in the newspaper and couldn't find any advertisement for this public forum or in the, neither. Also, on the same page, a public workshop on planning and permitting was held on September 16, 2013. I couldn't find any advertising for this public workshop, so the people that are being affected by this map or zoning or master plan could have something to talk about at these meetings. Now I'm referring to the zoning law memo done in 2018. On February 11, 2013, the Planning Board provided an update on the request for technical assistance in regards to the adoption of formal development principles and strategic development plans for areas in the community to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. MNPC has agreed to provide said assistance in 2013. And the update on this plan was said to be given at the March 2013 Planning Board. I can't find anything regarding that meeting either. And I've mentioned many times, I've attended many Planning Board meetings, and they usually break down into chaos because the chairman can't keep his people in line. Everybody starts talking over each other. I can't find any minutes. I would like to ask for your help to try to determine when these two meetings happened, 2012 or 2013. Can someone produce the minutes to those meetings? I'm not sure if I read it wrong, but I can't find them. Also concerning the Eagle Side Park property that was brought up at the, at the Planning Board meeting last week, was brought up, so I thought I'd mention again, which I've mentioned probably 10 times at meetings here and with the Planning Board, that in order to change parkland, open space, et cetera, you have to go through a process. The process is Article 97 Disposition of Land. I asked the gentleman Michael Wang, I think, if he has considered going through that process. Many other towns and cities, including Brookline, was a recent case in Brookline where there are four properties that are going to be affected by change of use, and every one of them was suggested by the, by the council in Brookline that don't bother doing it because that land comes under Article 97 Disposition of Land. I hope we get the same, I hope the town people get the same consideration that Brookline gave their town people, to have a fair, open, and honest discussion about the use of Eagle Side Park for different reasons. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, Donna?
Just on that note, on Eagle Side Park, I just want to say that to me, given the density of Winthrop, we're eighth in the state, 42nd in the country, but we're the densest town in the state of Massachusetts. Eagle Side Park, for this area, as dense as it is, is kind of like our Boston Common. You know, with the airport and particulate matter impacting, so many people living in so-called space, you know, it provides oxygen and all the good things that greenery provide, especially for a dense community. So to me, I would add it as kind of our Boston Common.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Okay. Under general information and recommendations, we do have the Parks Committee here for presentation.
I love that, by the way. I'm Boston Common. That's excellent.
Thank you.
Busy.
Good thanks. How are you doing?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, cool. I got it. I'll just go sit back down.
Well, thank you for having us, President Beckham and Town Council. You know, we look at ourselves as the Parks Committee. We're obviously, we're a multiple member body, but we're an advisory committee. We don't set policy. Our job is just to, you know, do our research and advise you guys what we come up with. And, you know, we recently did a survey, and we found that there were two things overwhelmingly that people wanted to do to make our parks better for everybody. One of them was water features, like splash pads, which isn't really a possibility right now, if you think about it that way, but 64% of the respondents, which was overwhelmingly number one, was they wanted gates on the parks, the playgrounds. So we took a look at that, and we took a look at the parks specifically to see what parks would best be beneficial to have those. And there were four parks that we were able to, not prioritize, but say there was a low need for gates at the parks, specifically Pond Street Park, Pico Park, and the Fort Banks Park is already gated. So those were low priorities in our, in our mind. The four parks that we featured, focused on was Massa Park. Massa Park was actually dedicated to the town after Ralph Massa's four-year-old granddaughter was hit by a car. You know, it's, it's in a very busy area, and we thought that that would be a park that would benefit from gates. Coughlin Park, there's an issue with dogs. People are always down there. Everybody knows we need a dog park. On the other end of the equation, we have the dogs coming into the children's park, and that could, and that could be a problem, you know, if it gets bit or whatever, wants to, you know, that could, that could definitely be a liability. The dog playground at Lewis Lake Park is obviously right on 145. We got Veterans Road, and believe it or not, we have a Canadian geese problem there, where the geese are actually vicious in trying to get food, and there's a possibility that a geese could actually bite a child. I don't know if that would hurt that much, but, and then by far and away, out of everybody we surveyed, 82% of the people surveyed used Eagle Side Park on a regular basis. And, you know, that's a park that would be very easy to install gates. I think they had them at one time already before. So, and, and as far as Crest Ave Park is concerned, Crest Ave, I would love to have gates on Crest Ave. My kids go there all the time. It's right down the street from me. But, you know, from a financial standpoint, it didn't look viable at this time. So those are the four parks we focused on, you know, Lewis Lake Park, Eagle Side, Massa, and Coughlin. And, you know, I obviously, I've been talking with Sean Driscoll as well, and to be honest with you, he thought, you know, there were priorities besides putting on gates at the park that he would probably focus on first, but that's where the good news comes in. He'd prioritize other things because he'd be looking for financial support for those other things. We're not here to ask for any money from the Town Council. We're simply looking for your blessing because we believe we can get this through grant money. We don't think it's going to cost us anything. So we're here before you respectfully just to ask to pursue the grant money. And that's where we're at.
Questions from the councils?
I'd just like to say, thank you guys very much for your work. This is fantastic, sort of, you know, making Winthrop a better place to live, all while kind of at no cost to the taxpayer. And I'm wondering, sort of maybe to the Council President and the Town Manager, should we formally vote to endorse the Parks Committee proposal to seek grants and then implement the gates? Is that necessary, or can we kind of come to a more informal collective endorsement?
We don't have to, according to the council.
I don't think so. I think we can just give them our blessing to go forward. I don't think we need a motion or authorization to do that. Steve has.
Can I, I just want to raise just a little bit of thought, I guess, again, I commend you on the survey. I think it's great that you went out and got that information. Just a little history on the parks. All the parks that have been discussed, all the parks in town do have a fence around them. So you're talking about the gates on certain things.
Yep.
Those gates could actually become a liability. In the past, we've had injuries where gates were swung open while kids were playing. They were hit. Gates left the jar, kids running with their heads down, and they're running to the side of the gates, fingers, things like that. So there was a time when those gates broke or were removed because of issues of that sort. So just want to throw that out there, the gates, although, you know, if they're, if they're there to kind of give the kids a boundary, the fences are in, are in place. And potentially, we are creating liability by having swimming chain link gates on play areas. So just something to think about.
I appreciate that, and I, and we thought about that too, and we actually talked about that as a committee. And we, we came, in our opinion, we thought that the risk of somebody getting hit by the gate and getting injured by the gate, whether it be a finger or something, wasn't as much of a concern as us, as somebody running into the street and getting hit by a car. You know, and the other thing we looked at, and, you know, this is another thing we heard a lot of, is, you know, well, if you have the gates on the parks, well, parents are just going to be on their phones, and nobody's going to be watching the kids. And I thought about that, and I'm like, yeah, well, you know, it's 2019, the parents are already on their phones. You know, so let's, let's, let's get the gates up there. And you know what? I'd rather take a chance of a kid getting hit by the gate and getting hurt, or getting, or falling off a slide that's, that's in bad shape than running out into the street and getting hit by a car.
Any other comments from any of the councilors? You certainly have the endorsement of the council to proceed with your fundraising. Huh?
Yeah, absolutely. Good luck.
Appreciate all the work you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Police, we'll try, we'll start with Terry.
I would like to go behind fire, so.
You want to go behind fire? You sure? It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, everyone. We've had, first page is one of this.
Page 61.
Say that this budget process has certainly been a different budget process that I've been through in the past nine years. It's a process that was interactive, is a process that we got an opportunity to submit what we really thought we needed to make our departments flourish. And then we've got to meet with this Finance Director and the Assistant Town Manager and the Town Manager when necessary, as they pared back our budgets and our requests. So before, we were told always just to budget what you had last year, and keep it simple, and don't ask for much. So this year was a little bit different. They said, tell us what you absolutely need, and then we'll negotiate what we can afford to give you. So I appreciate that. It was pared back, and we expected that paring back to happen. So I just want to start off by recognizing our accomplishments this past year is certainly engaging with the schools and implementing their Alice program that we've been able to afford through the earmark Speaker DeLeo authorizes for school child safety in the town in Winthrop. So we certainly want to say thank you, and hopefully he stays in his position that we keep on receiving these earmarks as well. We also, C4RJ Communities for Restorative Justice was one of the biggest accomplishments this year. We were ahead of the District Attorney's curve on this, so as she got elected, she really wanted to see these programs implemented, and we already had it implemented. So we met with her staff just the other day with Meredith and Superintendent Schools and myself to discuss the C4RJ program. We've had a lot of cases referred to C4RJ, so kids are not getting charged, or even adults, some adults that have been referred to C4RJ. So it's done through a circle process, and there's certainly restitution, the same you'd see in courts. The benefit is, no one's getting anything on their arraignment records, so it doesn't harm them to, in future employment, military, educational opportunities. So that's one of the things that we did this year. Electronic control weapons, known as tasers, have been purchased through some drug asset forfeiture money and deployed to police officers on the street. That's a necessary evil nowadays. We've had, we had an incident down Shore Drive where the person was inside their apartment that had multiple knives drawn. We, our only weapon to refute that was a firearm. The state police showed up and utilized their taser, brought the situation under control. So after looking at these isolated incidents, we looked at the liability aspect of it, as well as how we could protect ourselves from overusing force, and we decided to deploy the tasers after we did that analysis.
You haven't had tasers up until last year?
Up until this year, no, we have not had tasers. And there were some early on issuance of tasers that people were certainly, had emergency medical conditions, and we wanted to see what the litigation played out, and those did play out in the favor of the police department. So we consciously, we'll, we continue to review those cases as they can, as they come up. And the Deputy Chief did have one of those cases in review, so he had some experiences of going through that whole process with the District Attorney's Office. They, we continued this year, one of the largest cash seizures in drug, for drugs here in Winthrop. It was a regional task force that Deputy Chief Goodwin put together, and the money that was here was over a million dollars, another $300,000 in a bank account. We did a search warrant on that bank account as well. So those asset forfeiture monies will be distributed when the case is almost over, or we get a court ruling on, on those asset forfeages. So we're obviously thankful for that. Some of the things we got the offices this year, obviously radios, thanks to the council, the manager, the speaker, tasers, a server that was about $16,000 in costs that we couldn't afford. We have a lot of Homeland Security cameras coming into our server that was blogging it down. Homeland Security replaced our server at $16,000, savings to the town. Firearms simulator is on its way again through Homeland Security grant money, and that'll help us do shoot, no shoot situations with projection screens on the range, so that'll help officers be in more control through training when they, if and when they're faced with real life scenarios of not to shoot, as well as when to shoot. It's more, we put more emphasis on not shooting, and these projection screens put, put up people that you might perceive as a threat that have no weapons. So that'll be utilized next year in our use of force training. Our goals for next year, this has become a certified police agency through the Massachusetts Accreditation Commission. We have issued 159 policies. Saadron Krasafi is leading that charge for me. She works with me on a daily basis on documentation, backup, and proof. So it's not just policies, it's proving that you're enforcing the policies, you're using the policies, you're training on the policies. So we have, under a self-assessment, now we'll be moving to mock assessment next month, and then. and then they, they'll come in over the summer and do the regular assessment when they have available assesses. Uh, so we pay a thousand dollars a year to be part of the mass accreditation committee. They send in police chiefs and captains and lieutenants from other agencies that actually go through the checklist and then certify you. So we hope to get the certification process done this year and accreditation done the following year. Um, we'd like to reorganize our command staff, uh, move the lieutenants into a more administrative roles where they're actually issuing policies and writing the policies, um, and get them out of the supervisor role that they're in and move the sergeants into that supervisor role that they're on the street observing and watching police officers do their job and making sure we get the best product we can out of the offices that we have. So, um, recently there has been, uh, a lot of influx and we'll see, continue to see influx of police departments trying to, um, pick our best officers and take them on a transfer. We have four that receive state police cards, two put in for Lynn, two put in for Everett. Uh, Everett's, um, get the casino opening, they can make more money, more details, more overtime. Um, so we, we do, I, I don't expect, expect all these officers to be taken, but I do suspect half or, or three quarters of them will leave for other departments. So we, um, just put on ten reserves and the process of training those ten reserves up, they have to complete 400 hours of field training, um, and then they'll be able to work on their own on the street, which is a accreditation requirement and we never had that 400 hour requirement before. So we train them, but not to the extent the accreditation requires us to train them. So, uh, we see the positives of accreditation already taking place. Um, we, we are certainly want to issue clear expectations to anyone holding a specialty position of what we want to see on a daily basis from them and then judge them on those clear expectations. Uh, we want to post all our policies and procedures publicly facing on our website. Um, so that, we have to redact some material, um, phone numbers of state police and other local task force and stuff like that, but as much as we possibly can, we want everyone to be able to click on our policies on the website and see them and be able to read them. Um, so we're, we're in the process of, uh, we did chapter one and redacted all chapter one, we're on chapter two now. Uh, there's five volumes of policies, so you'll see them shortly being posted. Obviously we want to stand up a, a new public safety website, the police fire, um, animal control and also parking will have its own web portal available to click on the town website and be brought right over to it. Um, but it allows the police department information to post it one place and then spread it out to all our Twitter and Facebook accounts. So it's, we don't have to continue to post it here, post it here, post it here. It'll do it automatically for us. Um, so myself and chief Flanagan are still working on that. Uh, over the next year, I talked to the town manager about this. Um, social justice, um, units and social justice has become one of the main focuses of the police department, whether it be opiate outreach, hoarding, um, mental health or combination of all for any particular person. Sergeant Jurgidian is our outreach officer. Um, we're allowed under the grant, he has one day to do outreach. Uh, we have surpassed that need of one day, um, for our issues that we have here locally. So over, myself and Meredith are working on a grants opportunity to try to get it back filled so it doesn't cost the town anything. Um, but we would like to see, um, more added onto that. Uh, certainly it'd be a liaison to the C4RJ, uh, program, uh, all our mental health issues, our hoarding issues and our opiate issues. Uh, he's certainly a round peg in a round hole. He has a master's in psychology. Um, it's very uniquely, can you take the situation down? Inspectorial Services, who's been working with them and Meredith on several hard cases and was able to bring the tone down to a level and be able to, to move forward from that. So, um, I think investing in that area over the next year, certainly going to be my focus. Um, and we're going to try to do it on, on grants and writing grants and hopefully it won't cost us anything. We're not successful with grants. I have to come back to the town manager and again recreate how we're going to do this. But, um, certainly in our budget, we've asked for more sergeants, two additional sergeants. One of those sergeants would replace Sergeant Jurgidian, uh, if he was moved to the social justice outreach position. And, um, and the other sergeant would be necessary to move Lieutenant, uh, Lasad to administrative schedule. They have both lieutenants on administrative schedule, one on days, one on nights, um, to oversee all, all the operations and stuff that myself and the deputy chief pitch in for right now would be allocated out to those two lieutenants. Um, so I know, um, my request wasn't, um, granted on, on those two aspects, but we're going to still try to find ways to fund the social justice outreach coordinator's position. Um, because I think right now we just, with problem properties task force, I think the police department touches every aspect of all social services in here in Winthrop and helping coordinate, um, with Barbara Pucci and Capick, who is a great partner. Chelsea, I just heard, uh, over at Harvard last week, they had a, funded a position to work with their inspectorial services on a social worker from Capick who will then take all the issues and run with it and coordinate all the services there. Uh, so there's multiple ways of doing it. Um, we have a good relationship right now, so we're not paying for that service. Um, we're just using our connections, but it's time consuming and it, it does log us down a little bit, but it's worth it because of the health and wellness of our citizens as well as our offices are the most important things that we could possibly assist in. It'll hopefully reduce our call volume, um, the more outreach we do. So those are certainly the priorities over the next year. Um, I'd be happy to take any questions, um, that the council has on the budget.
Any questions for the councils? No? Manning? Each shift, how many men are in the...
Depends on the ti, the time of day. So, uh, you know, right now currently, um, on the day shift, you'd have four up until noon, you pick up a fifth at noon and then you have a fifth all the way to 10:00 PM. Uh, and then at 10:00 PM you pick up additional four, one goes home, so you have eight until 2:00 AM and then two for, two to seven, um, we could back, go back down to four. On, uh, Sunday, Monday, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, we drop it to three, one inside, two on the street. Um, that was a concern of one of the sergeants recently. We did do an analysis on call volume and we did not see the need to increase, um, that position at, at that particular time. So we'll keep an eye on it. Um, but that's how we've been trying to, to balance our overtime budget and our regular budget.
Quick question on the budget, can you just explain, there's two lines for uniforms. One's a uniform allowance and the other one's a uniform. One's at the top of the second page there and the other one's on the third page, maybe three or four down. Can you just talk about the difference?
So you have one, and I'm, well, knowing the chart numbers, I can't be too specific for you. I can certainly research the chart numbers and let you know exactly. Um, uniform allowance, every union person would get a uniform allowance each year. We are still required to provide, um, rain jackets, um, whistles, notebooks, um, I think badges, baton is still in the contract. So we're, and then myself and the, and the deputy chief's, uh, uniforms and replacement of those uniforms would come out of the page three. Um, and all of the, I think they get eight hundred and fifty, uh, each officer. So that would, if you do about thirty-six officers, that should come out to relatively close to that figure. Um, and that is for, um, against repair or buy anything that we don't buy them in cleaning.
Yes. Isn't another line item, you went from zero in 2019 to 10,005 in cleaning services?
I think that's just a recalculation. It's a service contract on the next line. It's just re...
That was added. Um, so, you know, part of, a part of accreditation, um, we had no ability to clean or to fix our cells. So we contract, um, cells are very particular and we, we can't have DBW be experts in the way the high temperature sealer has to be around after they change the light bulb. Uh, because the, the fact of the matter is that someone can get a shoelace in or a pant in there or a shirt in there, um, it's going to be very expensive for the town. Uh, so we hire a company who is certified by the state who does all the prisons in Massachusetts and more, majority of the police departments to come in. If we need to change a light bulb, they change the light bulb. They paint one cell each quarter. Um, it's just, if you have a scratch on the, on the glass, we get dinged by the Department of Public Health as a violation. So we need someone to fix those things as well.
Thank you.
Chief, I know we, we pay into, uh, the communication, the central communication system that we're under for out of Revere. Uh, we pay about close to $500,000 a year to be part of that. In your estimation, is, is that been a positive for Winthrop? Uh, is there any negatives involved in it?
Well, yeah, certainly...
Where the communication's not central here?
Um, certainly I think it's, um, unfamiliarity with the process from the citizen's standpoint and, and potentially from the dispatcher's standpoint. Everyone's moving to these regional dispatch centers and, and don't forget why we moved to regional dispatch is we never said it was going to save money. Um, but we did say in order to deploy our supervisors to the streets such as sergeants, that we needed to move our dispatch someplace. We were paying historically a sergeant lieutenant to answer the phone dispatch cruisers. Uh, and we wanted to get away from that model. Secondarily, and probably even more important than that, is we are required by law to take these 911 calls, to keep the people on the line and to explain and walk them through medical procedures. Um, you're asking police officers to be generalists, which becomes very dangerous and, and sometimes expensive when they make, you know, make an error, make a mistake on those instructions. Uh, so it, it's certainly, do we, is it perfect? No. Um, but we've had that growing pains with C4RJ too. Uh, but I think it's people getting used to it. I think it's something, I think I explained to the citizens' finance committee that we could, uh, get them to do a WCAT broadcast and explain, you know, this is how it is and how they take the call and do more cross-training with them when they hire new people, put them in a police cruiser for eight hours so they know, you know, where Lawson Rink is, where the high school is. So they have a geographical point of context when they receive that call.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments?
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Chief Flanagan?
Just briefly on the regional, regional dispatch, when we had all the 911 calls coming into the police station, if it was a fire call, they would drop it down to us or a medical. When EMD dispatch became the law, depending on your medical emergency, the call taker could not hang up until first responders arrived. At any given time now at the firehouse, we have two to five medicals going on at the same time. Sometimes we'll have two engines at the arbors on different floors, different apartments. Um, you know, we had a lot of new development, the temple, the Darnable School and the arbors. The arbors alone have been to over eight hundred times since they opened. We continue to go there multiple times a day and a lot of these people that are laying on the floor, we are obligated to hang on. We only had one fire dispatcher in the firehouse. So it has freed us up. Uh, the town allowed our, our dispatcher to go out on the apparatus, but we did not have the ability to legally do medical dispatch. So the period of time that the law came into effect and we were getting regional dispatch up and running, what was happening is the call would actually come in and we'd dump it to action ambulance up in Wilmington and they did the EMD end of it. So it freed up our dispatcher to talk to the apparatus on the road as well as, uh, whatever else had, answer the, any other calls that came into the firehouse. So really basically the law changed what we were going to do. Um, you know, so many communities, uh, Maryland has twenty-six piece apps, uh, public safety answering points, uh, total. Uh, Massachusetts has 261, you know, Baltimore being compared to Boston. So it is the way of the world, civilian dispatches and, uh, we're hoping that our, uh, regional dispatch center grows and as it grows, we're now taking cell calls. Our cost to the community should go down as our volume picks up with other communities. So it's been very positive on the fire department end, but there has been growing pains. Um, the fire department budget, as a lot of you have heard, we're going through the same thing that public works in the police department is going through. Right now, um, my department's down eight members as well as I have one member out on family leave due to his wife getting a compound fracture of her leg, so he's been out taking care of her. Um, the other problem that we had is when we got new employees, we would train them and after a couple of months, they would be put into, um, dispatch until which time they could tend the fire academy. The fire academy has roughly 250 recruits backlog right now. So when you have one of the smallest time, uh, fight apartments in metro fire and you're down eight positions, it's imperative for your overtime budget to get them into the academy, get them trained and get them, um, so they count on shift strength. So with my inability to get anybody in the fire academy, I had the opportunity to get three in at the end of September. They would graduate just before Christmas and then I was going to get another three in in February. Um, the recruits that we have, and we give them offers of employment, but we no longer bring them on to the department, uh, just prior to them attending the fire academy. Uh, so what I did is I was able to get them in the Springfield, uh, Springfield campus of the Mass Fire Academy. Uh, we're going to house them out there Monday through Thursday. So for 10 weeks, they would be, basically be living in Springfield. It would be a cost to the, to the, my department anyway, 15,000 to board them. Since we've been able to strike a deal with the Boston Fire Academy and they are going to run an academy beginning July 8th, they're going to teach the exact curriculum of the Mass Fire Academy and they are taking all of my recruits effective July 8th and I'll have them on the job working, uh, mid-September, the same course they get at the Mass Fire Academy. It's going to cost me four, $4,000 a recruit, so I'm going to be in for 24,000 for the first six. And I plan on paying that out of the personnel account. I had spoken to Anna, the CFO, and the, the 24,000 is a pit as compared to what it would cost me to replace two guys on a shift every day until sometime in February. So it's all going to work. Uh, so with that being said, um, a lot of the things that Chief Delahanty, uh, talked about, uh, the fire department, as difficult as it is for the fire chief to be tight with the police chief, awful lot of things worked in a small town. Um, when our problem property started, you know, Harvard would come to us and say, wow, you guys work well together with Meredith on the team. One of the big things that has been facing us is really life-threatening hoarding around town that we've been coming across and it's all part of the mental health problem that the chief spoke to. But over the last several weeks, Meredith, my inspection and, uh, inspectional officer have turned around some homes in Winthrop that it, it's just unbelievable what happened and, um, you know, kudos to all of them and all, really all of us working together, the success of the town, the, at least the major departments, public works, fire and police, the ability of, of the three of us all to pool our assets, because standing alone, none of us have enough assets. We've been incredibly successful for what we've done. Uh, so with that all being said, my budget again, you know, the budget process was this year, uh, the manager requested, he says he's trying to build a look at what the town properly staffed would, uh, really look like in the numbers. It's something that we hadn't done before. So I put in for four additional employees, as brief as the request was. Um, we did show four, but we did have permission from both the manager and the deputy manager to go forward with a safer grant. Safer grant is you apply to FEMA handles it, uh, you apply for personnel. Lynn just got 25 fighters on the safer grant. So if you were successful in your grant and it's a lengthy grant process, they will pay for the four guys, 75% the first year, 60% the second year and 35% the third year. And then the community owns them. Doesn't mean if we're successful in the grant that we will take them, but we did apply and, uh, we'll see where that goes. Uh, my line items that really changed, uh, this year, my overtime budget, uh, all town employees got a 2% raise across the board. They adjusted my personnel line last year. They didn't reflect it in my overtime account. So I put in and, and they, they did give me my 2% on my overtime, uh, line. I request an additional 5,000 on my buildings. As we all know, my buildings are really in crisis mode. mode. I will go into some of my capital requests that we have in this year and they're all critical. Kudos to Senator Boncory. As both the science community and public health are looking at the uptick in cancer in firefighters, as you know, the town funded their last piece a couple of years ago to replace our turnout gear. Guys kind of tend academy classes, go to any training if their gear exceeds 10 years. Ozz was just exceeding 10 years and the community came up with the third piece of the 33 grand to replace it. And now the big push was, and again, the gentlemen, my recruits that will be attending the Boston Fire Academy have to go with two sets of gear because every time that their gear is exposed to carcinogens in training, the gear has to be washed. Senator Boncory teed up an earmark for the Winthrop Fire Department of $61,000, which, you know, I got to believe the speaker may have had his fingerprints on it as well, but it was Senator Boncory that teed it up. He promised it to us and it was delivered and we got notice just a week ago of the $61,000, which will allow me to buy a second set of gear for my entire department. Through Homeland Security, the maritime grant, we just got $105,000, which the harbor master and myself are going to split up and I have to get a few things for the police department. I just got a $50,000 grant for a medical gator, which will be used for areas around Deer Island Walk, the beaches or anywhere else that we have to extract anybody off the beach. It will be set up for medical aid calls and it will be a special event vehicle. So, again, going back to my department, you know, we're going through some genera, the department was fortunate enough to have longevity in all ranks for decades. The department is going through a generational shift that provides both for opportunity but has created some challenges. I had requested to the town manager an extra $20,000 to deal with necessary training this coming fiscal year. And again, that was one of the things that my budget is showing on an increase. Other than that, there is not many issues that have changed in my budget. Again, we are talking with K and, not K and P, but the architects. We have a meeting this Thursday. They've looked at several sites for a public safety building. That seems like that's not going to come to fruition only because there is no space for a building of that size. So, this Thursday, we're going to be doing a tour of the police station for possible upgrades in that building and looking back to where my building is now and possibly taking of the adjacent properties. The Stimson property behind us, they have closed up their moving business. They were looking to sell two homes. Everybody is looking to sell their property, not because the town is looking to buy, just for whatever reasons, changes in their lives. So, we could put a fire station in that location, but as we move forward, the fire stations are just coming apart at the seams. And it's something that's going to have to be addressed soon because the last thing we want to have to do is put the firefighters in trailers, you know, and the CFO had asked me what was the most important thing in your capital request and how would you rate them? I said, "Well, if it's raining, it would be the roof. If it was a power failure, it would be the generator." So, but we're looking to repair the, the roof over the stairwell on the beach station that's leaking. The bay in the ladder truck, the new, the new bay on the beach station where we keep the ladder truck, all of the equipment lockers for the firefighters are in there and they're all topped to protect their gear from getting wet on any rainy day, not a heavy rainy day. We are going to replace the emergency generator at the beach station. I took that generator when I was a captain on the department from the Cliff House Nursing Home. I think Steve Callow was deputy director at the time and they brought it down with a front-end loader. We had it rebuilt. We wired it in and, you know, it's 1968 or so. Anytime it starts up, the neighbors called the DEP because of the smoke and other things. So, that has to go. And another thing that won't be a priority this year is, but anytime we send a piece of fire apparatus out of town, we put engine three in service. We have a callback of guys to replace whoever went out of town. If you send four guys out of town, we'll bring four guys in to man the town. And I put them on a 32-year-old piece of apparatus where they're riding the outside of the apparatus, which is no longer legal. Years ago, when we always did it and you had guys that had experience, they know when to lean right, lean left as you're making the corners. These guys have never ridden on the outside of an apparatus. Right now, 40% of my department has less than one year of service in awe. They haven't even been appointed yet. They haven't even gone to the academy. So, it's, I'm a little bit behind the eight ball manpower-wise going into the vacation season. That's all I have.
Is the chimney at the beach firehouse still in the same state?
Well, I do have $4,000 to take the chimney down. The chimney in the beach station collapsed last winter and anytime that the wind went in the northwest, we'd open the bulkhead doors because the, the big boiler on the beach station, it's got what they call a pan on it. So, as it's on, the CO and the fumes get caught in this big pan, go up the chimney. But because the side of the chimney collapsed, a northwest wind would cause a down pressure, which it would spill out on the pan. So, they would call up and tell me the CO detectors are going off down the beach station. So, you know, they would open the bulkhead doors and stuff to, to help. But what we did is, the repairs of the chimney were going to be $25,000. So, we had a company come in and direct vent. They corded the side of the building. We direct vented it with a power vent and a stainless steel vent on the side of the building. But all of the major aspects of the building are in failure now. Every time we get a heavy rain, we lose a conus that's over one of the windows. The buildings are truly in tough shape. The town, you know, is definitely, nobody's in an argument that the buildings don't have to be replaced, but we do our best to, you know, we don't fall under, we don't fall under facilities management. We take care of most of our own stuff and maybe that's why they lasted so long. But it is something that we'll be back to see you on, so.
I commend you and the men and women of the fire department that have, you know, pieced things together through the years, put new windows in, painted, whatever. And certainly, down the road, we hope to, going to be able to get a new combined facility.
Yeah. And if any of my guys have ever put a kitchen in for you, it's a good chance your cabinets are in whatever our firehouse.
Yeah. It was in tough shape when I used to hang with the police body station.
Yeah. So, what they do is they bring stuff in, they make it work and that's been it.
Any questions from the council?
I'm sorry.
I do. I have one on the, the roof. Is that, do you need the entire roof or just a certain area?
An entire, the, the two roofs on both stations are original. The original site roof, one from 1904, one from 1887.
Wow.
The rubber roof on the new bay, the new bay was built in, I think it was completed in 1985. But the rubber roof, whenever the wind blows, the roof completely inflates. And so, we have a price on that roof of $22,000. So, that's in the capital request. And I think when the manager knows how everything sits, he'll be deciding, you know, what his capital projects will be. But that, those are the items that we put in.
Just thanks for a great job again, but just a couple of questions, simple one on the hydrants. And I had asked this question to the finance committee. Is it possible to color code the hydrants that have different pressure in them because we have a situation where, you know, different mains going into different hydrants?
We can, but you know, the, the problem is, there's very few places and I think, you know, where we have double hydrants. We have them on Pauline Street. We used to have them up on Prospect. I think when you did all the mains, that was changed. It's not often we have a choice on what hydrant to take. You take the hydrant that's closest to the fire building. What happened at that fire, we had a Boston company come in to run a lineup to Bos, to Revere Engine One and he had two hydrants to take and he took the wrong one. You can follow the NFPA color code where it's, you know, your color's over 1,000, under 500, you know you stay away from a red top hydrant. Overall, I cannot tell you in my career how much the water system in Winthrop has improved. And it all goes back to our Dick Clemens Day. They had a gentleman in the water department, Dick Clemens, for a few years, and they did tremendous work on the water system. It's very rare that we have a problem. We did have an off-water apparatus initially on the same water main. It took just a few minutes to get it straightened out and we had ample water. So, I don't want anyone to think that, you know, we almost lost the neighborhood due to a water problem. We did have a broken hydrant and it happens during the winter. Snowplows, cars, people hit a hydrant, they say nothing. When you go to open it, either the finger's turned and the, it's leaking at the base, leaking at the bonnet. You can't get a cap off because it's been damaged. We had one hydrant on Walden Street through no fault of the town. The hydrant was damaged. We had a Boston engine that wasn't familiar with those two hydrants grabbed the wrong one. As soon as we asked them to change over, we had ample water.
And on staffing, when we look at Suffolk Downs, over the next five, seven years, they're proposing 10,000 units, which is basically another Winthrop. If there's two people per unit, that's 20,000 people. Are there staffing perimeters? Obviously, you would think they've been bringing in more tax if they're hiring more, but it also affects us because we're, we can't get out of.
But you have to understand, I have 32 guys in suppression. I have four eight-man groups. Currently, I have four six-man groups. Revere has 115 firefighters now, now, and they are looking to staff up for their, their building boom. A perfect example was when they had the casket company burning in East Boston. That is one of the worst scenarios for us because we're at the end of the pipeline. And I've always said, even when they were talking about the casino coming to East Boston, that we're geographically challenged. We take, we take help in from Revere or through East Boston and they come from Chelsea. There was nobody coming to Winthrop that night. They, they had grabbed everybody because they had a water problem. They were at the end of their water system. They had tremendous water problems early. And we do have a callback system and we did call back additional people because we knew we were going to get no help. As well as when our engine was up there for eight hours, we had a 32-year-old engine in service. So, you know, we do have some bumps in the road on occasion. And in the, the opposite direction, the problem I have now is when I request neutral aid in, none of the out-of-town apparatus fits in my firehouses anymore. I only have a clearance of nine feet. The average engine now minimum is nine-six. So, you know, especially in the wintertime, they can't house their apparatus in my stations. So, it's all been a problem.
And the last question I have, one that, you know, towns in contract with a solar company that helps your department a little bit, helps the rain, helps the schools. And I know that there's, you know, it's level service now. Obviously, there's a savings that we wouldn't be entering into the contract, I would hope. But there's also a charge back that comes with it. And maybe more to the CFO that in next year's, in next year's budget at least, that we can set the lines out to show, I would hope, a reduction in the electricity costs and also a charge back for the cost of the program. Because it's just level funded, which I'm, I'm hoping you're saving some money there or shouldn't be in the program.
We are completely all LED, my whole, all my station.
I know. But I'm just saying that part, I think the fire station is part of that solar contract that we're under. So, you receive credits. So, hopefully for the next year's budget, we could, that was it.
No, no, no.
You're just saying.
And we've had that conversation.
Yeah.
She's assured us next year will be.
And thank you again for your.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Robert Hurley.
Page eighty-nine.
The Department of Public Health.
Page eighty-nine.
Welcome.
Thank you. My budget's a lot smaller than these gentlemen. Go by a little quicker. All right. Sorry. So, to kind of touch on what has been a bit of a common theme tonight around mental health and what both the chiefs have said is that we are doing a lot. We're trying to really address the root cause versus just be reactionary to so many different things, to substance use, to hoarding, to, you know, other dangers throughout the community, any sort of crisis intervention. So, and sometimes that's hard to measure, but we're, we're trying to work a bit more on our capacity to gather some data. But what I can tell you is, so we, so currently, we are working, we're still, we're doing very well with the CLEAR program, which mostly know is the opiate outreach program. It started as the opiate outreach program. We, we look at every, every access to recovery, irregardless of the substance. It's not just purely opiates. I just had the statistics for, right now, in terms of like, in terms of the substances that are being admitted from Winthrop residents into treatment, the primary substance still, still is heroin, which is at like 40, 48% of all of the people that have entered treatment from the town, second to alcohol. So, it doesn't make sense to only focus on opioids. We have to focus on all of them. And luckily, through funding, we've been able to onboard a peer recovery coach and also Officer Jarian works one day a week in, with the CLEAR team to do outreach. And secondary to that, we also have the Crisis Intervention Team, which is creating connections between law enforcement, mental health providers, hospital, hospital emergency services and individuals with mental health illness and their families. So, that is through the Department of Mental Health. We get a grant every year for $76,000 that provides a social worker 20 hours a week and then also pays the backfill for Sergeant Jarian for 10 hours a week for his shift. And it's related, so kind of the struggle around that is that we know that we have so much social services needs. We could have two social workers that are, that, we could probably have six if you include the schools. We know that the schools are struggling. We know that, you know, adults are struggling. So, 20 hours a week is definitely not cutting it and we spread it so, so much. We are constantly picking up some slack, which is great because we do have an excellent team going on. Technically, if our funder were to come to us and say, "Your social worker is only supposed to be involved with justice-oriented cases," we are not using it in that capacity. We are, we could make the argument that most of them could potentially be justice-involved because of predictors of health and things like that. But, you know, technically, it's supposed to be a much more formal, formal agreement between the police department. And so, we use it in many different ways. One of the other big things that we are focused, that is tasked with the health department is disease investigation and infection control. So, more than 90 diseases are reported to the Department of Public Health. Last year, 100 of those diseases were reported directly to this department and of those 100 cases, 38 required follow-up for disease investigation. So, that would be a tuberculosis case. Influenza does not fall under this. So, but it would be like tuberculosis. I've had two suspected mumps cases that got ruled out, but in the meantime, you know, there's isolation requirements that you have to do. So, that can bog down, that can bog down my department as well. Another responsibility is the Public Health Emergency Management. So, it's all the preparedness activities related to disease outbreaks, weather-related emergencies, mass casualty incidents. It's, it's obviously different than what public safety does, but it has to do with the triage and navigation after, the recovery response. And currently, we part, so we have two different funding sources for that. We have, because we're part of UOSTI and the Metro Boston Homeland Security, we, you know, kind of have our hand a little bit in that pot of money as well. Not very much, but we at least have some access to it. And then we have Region 4A Bay. And through that, we're able to fund an MRC coordinator for $8,000 a year and also additional data entry because there's a lot that the CDC requires for their operational readiness. And then we participate in the North Suffolk Public Health Collaborative, to which Winthrop contributes just about $19,000 a year. Currently, they are part of what their initiative is right now is leading the Integrated Community Health Needs Assessment. And priorities for this year, this upcoming year, is really to address the mental health needs and the case management. As the chief said, we are constantly looking for ways to fund Sergeant Jarian full-time and also to at least increase the social worker hours by an additional 20 hours a week to really look at, a lot of these cases are really in-depth and they're really time-consuming and they, you know, happen at all hours of the day, the night, the weekends and things like that. And quite a few usually needed some sort of a, an emergency And quite a few usually needed some sort of a, an emergency response within 24 to 48 hours. Um, and it's, it really creates a struggle at times. Um, and hopefully going to launch a pilot project to provide childhood vaccines to residents throughout town. Um, that can be funded through the Department of Public Health. Vaccines is a big thing right now, so just being able to, be able to have children come to my office, I can give them any of the vaccines that they need and the Department of Public Health would pay for it. That's it. Any questions?
Do you work with the senior center? I know they have an outreach coordinator over there.
Yep.
So you guys work together?
Mm-hmm.
That's good.
Yep. Um, I actually, right now I, um, was connected with a resident here in town who is having some struggles, um, with just doing eye drops. And so they reached out and we've had a nice like collaboration between myself and the MRC. So it's been good.
Any questions from the councilors?
Council president?
Please.
Meredith, thank you very much for walking us through the budget. Um, I noticed that the percent increase for the Health Department is 7.26% this year.
Mm-hmm.
Now, is that mostly because of the add-on of a peer recovery coach or what's kind of driving that cost?
Yep. So it would be because of, um, of the peer recovery coach, but for the most part it was kind of there. So the, I'm just looking to, I'm just pulling it up, sorry. Um, yep, so it would be the peer recovery coach, um, position that it had been for 18 hours a week and now we are looking at it for 35 hours a week. Um, a lot of that is offset by grants though. So for the grants that are covering this project currently, just switch back over. So currently, um, the peer coach, the peer recovery coach position is funded $14,972 through my department, through Public Health, $4,176 through the Department of Mental Health, $14,500 through The Rock and then an additional $3,000 through Suffolk County DA. So.
Just, I don't know if it's really related to the budget, but how's your survey going that you initiated?
I think well. Um, the last update that I received from the steering committee is that Winthrop produced just as many survey results as Chelsea, um, like strict numbers-wise. So we definitely, um, are not excluding ourselves from, from the numbers. Um, my sticking point right now is to kind of make sure that we have some, some data that is only, not only, but that really identifies Winthrop's needs. Like, for example, I don't think it's, I would, I really, it would be helpful to me to not just know what the opiate overdose rate is in all three communities. I would like to know what it is in Winthrop, in Chelsea, in Revere. Um, because that will help drive some of these grants that we're always struggling to, to apply for.
Jeff?
All right, just a couple of questions. First, um, I would like to see in next year's budget, um, again for the CFO, that we fully show all the, because there are a lot of grants in this budget. And so it's very hard to realize, like you're looking at it and we're like, wow, we're understaffed as it is, we know that, but it looks really understaffed. But it would be good to include all the, um, all the items that are in here that aren't really in here because of the grants. So it would be good to include the grants and then back them out. Also, um, talking about the, the amount of the increase in the budget, we also, it, it's a very small budget. It's less than 1% of the town's budget, but, so a small dollar amount is a huge percentage for you. And if you look back just two years ago to fiscal 18, the budget's actually eight and a half percent lower than it was two years ago. So when you're talking with relative, I mean, it's not small numbers to anybody, $100,000, but relatively small numbers when you're talking about a $55 million budget. Um, a small increase percentage-wise looks pretty substantial when, you know, the reality is we're 8% lower than we were two years ago.
Great point.
Do we have any ability in your department to test particulates in the air from the airport or the testable level of noise?
No.
And we have never had any of that kind of equipment at the town?
No, and it's so interesting. So this year, um, we, so just this past semester, I worked with BU, um, on the Metro Bridge Project. And it was so interesting because it was a group of, of their honor students and I tasked them with three different public health challenges and one of them was, um, around the airport. And they came up with some great ideas related to that about how to put, um, you know, because we, I couldn't tell you exactly where the measure, where the instruments are in the town. I probably, I should know. Like I know that there, one's down in Cofflin Park, but I don't actually know exactly where one would be. Um, but how to, I'm really interested in how to capture our own data as you're kind of talking about that. And one of the suggestions that came out of the Metro Bridge Project, which they're actually compiling a report um, that they'll have to the town this summer with some of their ideas, is, um, to do measurements in the school. So it's, which is of kids that are asthmatic, of how to just do, it's vital capacity measurement. Um, and it's very simple and it's not, it, the equipment is not very complex or expensive um, because we know that the children in our community are much more apt to develop asthma related to the particulate matter from the airport. Um, so that was one suggestion that they had that's interesting. I would like to figure that out. I know, I really would love to see how to better align with an epidemiology program that, that has somebody that can, can kind of design these things and then just have us so that we can capture our own. We're a small community. We're not a huge population. Um, it wouldn't be, it's daunting for me, but I don't think it would be daunting for somebody that's really, yeah.
College, bring some college in.
Yep, exactly. And, you know, there are all of these, these ways to, to spread it. So for example, you know, using the epidemiology, I use epidemiology for the infection control and, you know, the disease reporting. Um, but how to use that for other capacities, so how to use it to, to measure other, other health indicators in the town. We've, we're talking about how to use that throughout the, the state in tracking, um, substance use. Um, and how to alert, because, you know, we might know what's going on in our community, but it doesn't just stop at our borders. Um, so, you know, trying to track a little bit better with geomapping and things like that on the same principles.
Anyone else? Thank you, Meredith, very much. Steve Cowan?
Good evening. I won't spend a lot of time reflecting on, on the prior year because I do want to get through all five divisions and give you all an opportunity to, uh, to go through the budgets and ask the questions. But a, a few projects that, that we were successful in closing out was the Contract Four, uh, which was a street and water and sewer infrastructure project on nine different streets in town. Um, the Cofflin Park, we were, we were able to identify, design and get permitted a green infrastructure project to stabilize the shoreline down there, which has been eroding uh, at a, at a pretty quick rate, uh, through the past five to 10 years. Um, the Belle Isle Ecology Park and Trail System. We did succeed at getting the Revere Street Tip Project programmed for a construction, uh, year of 2023, of which we've recently completed the 25% engineering submission and we're, uh, we're working towards the 75%. Uh, and we continue to work, uh, hard to get the Center Business District Infrastructure Project underway this calendar year. The challenges for the department continue to be, um, as I speak about the infrastructure projects, one of the, one of the big challenges is, uh, with, with all these, these projects that are vital to, to both the, uh, public safety and, and the enhancement of the community comes, comes debt. Uh, and so rising debt services, rising assessments, MWRA assessments, aging infrastructure and aging vehicles. And as the chiefs both spoke to retaining employees, uh, over the past year and a half, we lost seven employees to MWRA. Uh, we've currently have four vacancies, uh, department-wide, um, that we're trying to get refilled. So with that, I'll, uh, I'll get right into, um, into the budgets. Might as well start, um, I don't know if you have your budget books, but to start with the building, building maintenance, uh, department. Not all that much changes. Again, like, like most have been speaking about, uh, we had to be tight on, on our budgets and, and, uh, it's, it's pretty much a, a level-funded budget. Um, slight increase on the personnel line, uh, which is basically due, uh, just, just under $6,000 due to COLA increases and step raise obligations. Um, this division does employ five and one-third employees. Uh, we had a slight increase on our overtime. Um, we're finding that with the, with the, with the growing, you know, the, the fact that, that, that the department is, is taking on a lot of extra, extra projects, we had a need for overtime increase. We're also, uh, setting up much more, um, meetings than we were in the past. Every committee, you know, we get a lot more committees and the costs are increasing. So we increased the overtime, uh, by just over $2,000. Uh, longevity increase, slight increase, again, just that, that's an obligatory thing. I did put a request in, um, on the building maintenance, uh, purchase services and supplies. Uh, again, because, uh, there was a lot of requests townwide and, and not all that much money to go around. Uh, we, we were able to get just slight increases on both the material and purchase services line, one being a thousand-dollar increase, the other one being 1,500. That said, I just want to speak quickly about the department. The department is, um, the department has a lot of potential. We can get a lot of things done. Unfortunately, we're still kind of funded as a, um, light maintenance custodial budget. Our budgets just aren't, aren't really there to, to do the, uh, you know, major things that a lot of other departments are requesting, window replacements and things like that are forced to kind of fall onto, uh, capital improvement lists. Um, that said, uh, we, we were able to fund through special articles and we were able to do in-house, uh, the gazebo renovation down in Ingleside Park. Uh, we're wrapping up the building of the, uh, storage shed behind the E.B. Newton School. We did build the Zamboni Garage, uh, down behind the rink and we've done multiple office renovations and build-outs. So things that we're, we're proud, proud to have done in-house. Um, but we're really not, we're really not budgeted at this point to, to be doing, uh, big projects without the need to identify funding through special articles and things like that. So, um, I just wanted to, to make that point. But that's essentially the building maintenance, uh, budget. I don't know if you want to wait questions to the end. I can go into the, the highway department or we can kind of take questions as we go.
Questions? Or whatever.
Um, sidewalks, I know for years we've had a little item in there for sidewalk.
That'll be, I'll speak about that in the, in the DPW budget right next to, you know, unless you have a specific question about it. It, it actually was funded through the capital improvement plan this year. Uh, there was $50,000, uh, and then a commitment of $75,000 of chapter 90 funds. So 125, which is basically what we've been spending annually, uh, to get about 1,200 to 1,500 square yard of sidewalk completed townwide. Um, that's just miscellaneous pieces. Uh, it's not long continuous pieces. It's just a, it's a contract we put out annually to, um, try to reduce the trip hazards and kind of restore problem areas in town. So it is in the budget to answer your question. So the, the highway, the highway budget, um, the second division I'll, I'll speak to, actually, um, this budget represents a point two, a point 12% decrease. We're actually able to reduce the budget by $1,000 from our last year's, um, our, our last year's budget. Primarily, uh, due to, uh, depotsches of positions and rehires at a lower rate. We were able to save, you know, save some money, uh, that way. But the big point I want to speak to in, in the, in the highway division is, um, and again, I want to be very clear how grateful I am that we were able to include two new vehicles uh, in the manager's proposed capital improvement plan. The department continues to be challenged with, uh, the upkeep and operation of a severely aged vehicle fleet. Currently the DPW, um, operates 39 registered vehicles on a daily basis. Uh, and I want to be clear, I'm speaking just, just to registered vehicles. We also have, of course, an assortment of mowers and, and other equipment, tractors, things. But I want to speak to the 39 registered vehicles that we have. Of these 39 vehicles, only nine of them are five years old or newer. Uh, we have six of them that are between six years old and 10 years old. Seven of, seven, uh, that are between 11 years old and 15 years old. Seven more between 16 years and 20 years old and 10 that are 20-plus years old. Of the 20-plus-year-old vehicles, one of them's beyond repair. We're going to be surplus in that, that this year. And three of them are, uh, three largest, uh, salters, which we rely on in, in the worst weather conditions, snow and ice conditions, loaded with nine tons of salt. And these vehicles are, are, are 25, 26-year-old vehicles. So just kind of puts a, it in perspective of where we are equipment-wise and what we're able to still accomplish. Um, but there's going to come a point where it's just not going to be safe. I mean, I don't think anybody in this room has a, has a, has a daily driver that's 25 years old. These are trucks that we rely on in emergency situations. Um, one thing I, I, I want to share, and I, I think it's an eye-opener. Uh, to date in the fiscal year 19 budget, um, the DPW operating budget, which includes all divisions, has expended over $140,000 maintaining and repairing the current fleet. While the snow and ice budget, this is repairs that were done, snow and ice related, contributed an additional $180,000 to vehicle maintenance. Now, with that, $87,000 of that $180,000 that was spent on snow and ice-related repairs was expended on vehicles with an age of 15 years or older. So the age of these vehicles is certainly proportional to what we're putting in, in the money to them. So obviously no surprise there, but I did want to bring that to the, you know, kind of put it out there that, again, although we're very, very grateful to get three new vehicles this year, uh, or proposed in the capital improvement plan, we're not out of the woods. We still, um, I don't feel that we should be in a position where we have any vehicles beyond 10 years old and I think that's pushing it. Um, but, so hopefully we're going to work towards, uh, you know, with, with commitment to the capital improvement plan, kind of trying to rotate these, all the vehicles out. That said, I'll, I'll quickly go through the, the budget of, of the, uh, Public Works, um, Highway Division. We had a slight increase on the personnel line. Again, this division employs 10 and one-third positions. Uh, and because of the new hires and, um, you know, losing some, some older employees through retirements and just, uh, leaving for, for MWRA and other jobs, we were able to, um, only increase the, the personnel line by $1,000, even with the COLAs in, in, in the obligatory step raises. Other than that, it's, it's, it's a pretty level-funded, uh, budget. Um, we're still doing our best to identify money, uh, on playground maintenance. I did, uh, I did put in a request for playground money. Um, because there is obviously a need out there. I'm working with Sean Driscoll, um, on identifying other funding sources to kind of fix some of the, um, play equipment that, that we know is, is in need of repair. Eddie PBD, of course, earlier in this meeting, uh, spoke to a few repairs, uh, that, that are needed, uh, in the parks. I wasn't aware of a couple of the ones she brought up, but I certainly made notes of them and, and will, will.
I gave the information to the.
Yeah, we'll take a look at them and, and get some work orders, uh, together for them. We did, uh, again, the highway department, like the, uh, building maintenance department is, uh, is seeing an increase in, in, in supply costs and purchase service costs. Um, and that continues to be, you know, take a toll on, on the department. And, you know, we'll continue to work with what we have and, you know, I, I do think we are still accomplishing a lot. We've, uh, last year we were still able to, uh, plant, uh, 60, uh, street trees. Uh, again, to your sidewalk inquiry, uh, we, we were able to repair 1,500, uh, square yard of, of side, of sidewalk with the townwide contract in addition to, uh, uh, the sidewalk that gets replaced through the infrastructure projects. Anybody have any questions about the highway division?
Questions?
So thanks for walking us through this. Uh, I'd like to sort of focus on, on road conditions in town for a minute. It seems like our roads are in pretty tough shape these days.
They are, absolutely.
Um, under this budget, approximately how many? Um, under this budget, approximately how many miles of roads will be able to be resurfaced in the coming fiscal year?
None.
Zero miles?
Probably, you got 150, uh, over about 150 streets in town. So if you were able to do a street a year, you, you're getting to a street every 150 years. Luckily, in the Contract Four project last year, we were able to resurface nine roads. This year, um, there is nothing planned for full road, uh, restoration. That said, as part of the Center Business District project, uh, as that, you know, progresses through that, uh, project, all of those affected roadways will be, uh, curb-to-curb resurfaced on the sidewalks. And, um, there's a number of roads down there. But, uh, standing in front of you today, right now, I cannot say that XYZ roads are, are scheduled to be resurfaced this year.
And do we have a cost for approximately how much it is per mile to resurface a road? How much money do we need to move into this budget to see some, the needle move on this?
It all depends on what you, what you're looking to do. Uh, to, um, to do a mill and overlay on a road, the going price right now is about $18 a square yard. Um, to do a full reclamation, it's anywhere from $22 to $25 a square yard, depending on what that bid number is. Uh, that said, it's not money well-spent if you're going to resurface a road with aged infrastructure underneath it. Right? So, um, that's going to have to be a policy decision by the council and by the town manager. If you want to invest the money into a roadway, but don't want to invest the money in the infrastructure below it, you take the chance of, uh, of a road being destroyed prematurely due to a water main break or, or having to get into it due to other utility work. So, that's something that has to be decided, uh, you know, policy decision that, uh, are we going to? Cause there is chapter 90 money, some chapter 90 money that's accumulated. We did commit some of it to sidewalks. You know, in the capital improvement plan, $75,000 a year over the next five years. That leaves a little bit of money, uh, available each year, maybe $100,000. Probably enough to, to mill and overlay a street or two. But there, I'd have to really search for a road that I felt comfortable that had infrastructure below it that was... Again, even with new infrastructure, there's always, you know, a chance that, that things happen. Of course, the odds go, uh, much more in your favor that they won't. So, that would be, again, it's a policy decision if we're going to start resurfacing roads without infrastructure updated. Everything that we've updated in our infrastructure projects over the 12 years that I've been in this position, we've resurfaced. So, all the new roads that you see resurfaced have new infrastructure below them.
Thank you. Counselor, for real?
Thank you. 145. I know that's around the town road. Uh, every 20 years or so, we get a shot at some money.
What we did is we put an application in, a SIP application, which is much like the TIP process. Uh, it's under review. It was, you see how long it took us to kind of get programmed into the TIP process. Uh, but it comes at, at a cost. All of these programs come at a cost. You're going to engineer these projects, uh, in order to be eligible for the money. So you're going to make a commitment to engineer these projects at a cost of four to $500,000. And the money's free to, you know, once you get accepted to these programs, the state funds it, they administer the construction. It's a wonderful project, but there's a commitment upfront and you don't know exactly when you're going to benefit from that commitment. So, we'd have to find engineering money to engineer this as we move through the process. Right now, we've put an application in. If they say, yeah, we accept your application, now you need to come up with engineering money to get to the 25% submission. Then the 75% submission. And just like, just like going through the TIP process, which is what we've done right now. We're under contract with CHA into our 75% engineering phase, which you all just voted on, uh, about a month and a half ago, maybe a month ago. Um, and that's, that was about a, I want to say about $105,000 to get you just to 75%. You've already invested almost $200,000 prior to that for the 25%, because that's where all the survey work is and all the, uh, a little bit more in-depth, uh, stuff that has to happen before you actually start drawing things. You know, the, the borings and the surveys and all that, so.
Can you use the chapter 90 money we have in reserve for that kind of engineering study?
I can use chapter 90 money, I, I, well, I believe I can use chapter 90 money for, uh, for engineering, for roadway engineering. I would have to check that, to be honest with you. We have never done that, uh, but I will certainly look into it if that's something that, uh, you know, town manager wants to spend the chapter 90 money on.
Thank you. Counselor, both of you. Yeah, I just wanted to ask you a question about speed limit signs. Do we get those from the state?
On, on Route 145?
Yeah. On Route 145, we get it from the state?
On a numbered road, uh, the states, I think that's the only thing that they're, that they're responsible for maintaining is, is their, is their signage?
Street signs? Have we ever bought street signs from, from the state?
We require them, but I don't think there's an official process for that. I'm not sure if they're obligated. We've reached out, you know, we've been, I had the signs done from the MTA, some from contacts in Mastod, uh, so, you know...
That said, all of the pothole, all the maintenance of the road is the responsibility of the town, believe it or not. That's why this SIP project is really the only way we can get the state to take care of their, their road.
Why I was asking about the, the, uh, speed limit signs is because we passed an ordinance about a month and a half ago. Making Delby's to Deer Island 25 speed limit, but I haven't seen any signs there yet. And I don't know if we had them in-house, if we have to get them from the state.
We, we don't, we don't stock an inventory of speed signs? I mean, I could certainly get them made and put up if it, if it's something that, uh, I...
At that point, it wouldn't be 145 anyway.
That is 145, isn't it?
145 loops back at Veterans Road.
So, we'd certainly work on that and while you're on signs as well. As I know, Stevie, I got an email about Pleasant Street, uh, speed limit signs is on 145, so we're looking at both.
Sure, absolutely. Anyone else? All right, so, uh, I'll quickly touch on the cemetery, uh, department. It's a pretty simple budget, not much of a change, uh, from last year. Cemetery department funds, uh, personnel line for three and two-thirds positions. We had a slight increase, again, due to COLA, uh, increases in, in, uh, eligible step raise advancements. Other than that, we did, uh, we made a, a request for, um, for the escalation of materials, uh, and two supply lines. And we were able to, uh, increase, uh, each one of those supply lines, one by 1,000 and the other one by $1,100. Other than that, there really isn't any big, big change, uh, on the cemetery department. I, I will say that, um, three and two-thirds employees, the two-thirds being a clerical position, uh, is certainly understaffed to maintain four cemeteries townwide. But, you know, we, we get by with, uh, again, we're, we're a combined department, uh, a, so we utilize, um, manpower as, as we need. And, I mean, there's, there's many days where we have two and three interments in one day. And each, you know, interments are a, a pretty big deal and, and they take, they take manpower to get them done right and respectfully. And then to keep up on, on Memorial Day is a, a major, major undertaking for us each year. You know, to get the cemeteries up to par. You know, the rainy, the rainy weather doesn't help us, puts us behind and Memorial Day closes in quick. But we're getting there with the mulch and, uh, we're repairing some, some, some loom. And we're trying to schedule a hydro seeder to come in and, and, uh, you know, get some coverage on, on the new loom that we, we use to repair the edges of the roadways and, and some...
So, Stevie, the, the staff that you have for the, assigned to the cemetery department, it's all inclusive? They do all the cutting of the grass and so forth?
It's very difficult to say that the same exact people are, are doing that every day, but, but those obligations exist every day. So, of the 52 acres of grass that the DPW has to cut on a weekly basis, about, um, 20, 20 acres of that is, 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 uh, 25 acres of that is the cemetery. And so, every, every week, each cemetery gets cut. We do our best to get the weed whacking done. The weed whacking is a little bit more time-consuming. But it's a challenge. Yeah, it's definitely a challenge and with the vacancies, it makes it even more of a challenge.
I remember when I was going to school, they used to have a program with students at the, you know, just as it's going in, the end of the summer, or the end of the, getting into the summer or the spring, that they would hire them and they would help clean.
We still do. It's actually run through Poxxon Rec right now, the Mastport Program. And we do, we get, uh, he gives us, uh, Sean gives us usually about six, five to six, um, students or, or, uh, just past students. You know, and it's, it's very helpful. We have had some incidents in the past, um, where we've had some injuries with, with head trimmers and, and, and weed whackers. So, it's, uh, of course, with these individuals, it's good manpower, but it takes supervision as well. So, it's a little bit of an offset.
What's the status with the, the building that you're taking down there?
We got a, uh, we just completed the bid documents. We're going to be putting it in the central register, uh, this month. We're hoping to get a bid opening, um, at the end of May, if not, uh, the, the first week in June, uh, and, uh, to, to remove that building. That's in the upper section. That's the old...
How many, how many grave sites?
We're hoping to be able to develop 15 to 20 grave sites there, you know? And we're still trying to determine, um, how to go off, how to go about selling them. We don't offer pre-need sales at the moment, um, anymore. So, whether or not, um, we can do some sort of lottery or, um, auction, or I don't know, we have to figure out legally, you know, what's legal. Right? But there is, uh, it's, it's a very historical cemetery and it's, you know, a lot of, a lot of people are interested in, in, you know, in that cemetery, so, um, I don't know if...
It's on the national register. Did you have a question?
No, that was it. I have a question. Again, I think I mentioned it before. What would be the shot now that that building's gone, of putting a mausoleum there and maybe putting 50 instead of 15 into that area?
Yep, we can cer- we can certainly look into, into all those options.
And see if we can do that.
Yep, yep, we can look into that option as well.
There's still a perpetual maintenance fund.
Yeah. So, there's, there's two, two funds right now. There's the Perpetual Care and then there's, there's Sale of Land Fund. Perpetual Care, you can only spend the interest on. So, I think there's around $600,000 in that fund. 606,000, I think, is what we looked at, uh, which makes about $29,000 of interest available. Uh, and then there's the Sale of, the Sale of Land, which has, I think, about 170-ish thousand in it.
Uh, so, with the Town of Wuthers, um, annual increase in revenue being 4.5%, cemetery department's increase for this coming fiscal year in this proposed budget is 5.75%. So, what sort of additional benefits or services can the taxpayers of Wuthers expect?
So, like I said, the, the major increase is very moderate, I mean, it's a small budget, so that 5% is a little bit deceiving. If you look at the amount of money that it actually increased from last year to this year is, uh, you know, $12,000.
So, um, permanent employees are being increased by 6.25%?
They're being, being increased, yeah, that was, uh, again, COLA. And, um, it went from $181,000 to 192. But it was not just COLA. We, we actually kind of reorganized the department. We didn't, uh, we actually put, um, a third more of the clerical position salary, shifted it over to the cemetery. Because we determined that, that she's spending more time doing cemetery work and, and, uh, reviewing deeds and, and things to that nature than, um, than she, than she, we, we previously had allocated the funds to. So, that's part of that 11,000, uh, and then the rest, like I said, is COLA, is COLA in, uh, its steps. Again, it's an $11,000, a $12,000 increase over last year. The number looks big, 5.75%, but it's a small number in, in respect to the, uh, the department as a whole. Reallocation of, of position really was a major part of that.
And again, that's really only a 3.6% increase over fiscal '17, which is three years. So over three years, you've only increased the budget 3.6%. Do we have a number of how mu- not that it's an enterprise grant or in any way, shape or form, but it, it generates revenue in terms of... Do we know how much revenue it generates in terms of sale of lots, or you...
We actually had that discussion today. I, I think we, we, we increased by about $30,000 annually, the sale of land. But we're using a portion of that money to offset, um, to, 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 to offset the budget, so.
There's, there's an annual, there's been an annual transfer in the budget the past few years and has continued to be proposed in the town manager's budget for about 26,000 by 22, I would say, off the top of my head. And, and the budget this year also proposes taking another $13,000 from that fund in order to afford, um, these increase, these increases at the cemetery department to offset that. So, sort of what's coming in is sort of, is then kind of directly contributing to the annual kind of year-over-year expenditures in the cemetery department.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
And I just want to just touch one more on, on your question, counselor. As I, I spoke to that point one-two percent decrease in the highway, that was probably, part of that was shifting some of that obligation over to this spot here. So, it's all out of the general fund, it's just a movement of money there. Uh, with that, I will move into the Water and Sewer Division. It's a combined, as we know, it's a combined enterprise fund, but we still separate them out, uh, in, in the budget document, just kind of for clarity. Uh, and to, you know, better track, you know, um, what's what. Uh, and what's being used in, in, uh, on each side of it. Again, as I spoke in the beginning of my discussion, with, with the, the, the major infrastructure improvements that we are making, uh, critical to the town, uh, for, you know, public safety, public health, and just the enhancement for the community, comes debt services. So, um, the ma- the major increase of, of this budget, um, although the, the sewer budget has, you know, only underwent, you know, just under a 2.6% increase, the water budget did undergo a, um, a, a large increase, uh, over last year. And it's primarily due to, uh, the new debt that's coming on the books. We, we brought, uh, the new debt this year from, from past infrastructure projects over this, you know, uh, previous years, increased debt services by, um, just over $800,000. Uh, so, that's one of your, your, your major contributors to that, to that big jump on, on, on the water, on the water budget. Uh, and additionally, the, uh, MWRA assessments continue to be, uh, you know, a major challenge every year. The, the sewer assessment this year jumped up, um, I think 4%? Uh, just, uh, almost just under 4 and a half percent and the water assessment jumped up 8%. Uh, so that's an increase, uh, on the water assessment of about $160,000 from last year's budget. And, um, on the water side, that's an increase of about $140,000 from last year's, um, budget. So, those are our two major increases. We actually reduced the personnel line, uh, in, in the, in the sewer division by $15,000 from last year. Again, um, it was due to, um, loss of employees to retirement and, and transfers over to MWRA and hiring, uh, new employees, uh, you know, at a, at a, at a lower rate because of, you know, coming in at a, at a lower step. Other than that, we had, uh, we also had a reduction in the sewer department in the longevity obligation. Again, because longevity obligation goes away with, uh, a year-one employee over a, an employee with, with multiple years under their belt. And that's really all in the sewer department. So, the, the increase of 2.6% is primarily the sewer assessment. On the water side of things, our salary increased over last year, salary line increased, um, just over $7,000. Primarily, uh, COLAs and step increases. Uh, we still do have, uh, two vacancies in the water department and we have two vacancies in the sewer department, uh, currently. And, uh, again, I spoke to, uh, the MWRA assessment of, in the water end of things, uh, of just under $140,000. And really, the, the major increase is associated with, uh, debt service increases with new debt.
So, everything that we did up on, on the hill?
Everything's coming in, yes. You have Contract Four hitting the books, uh, Contract Five hitting, uh, the obligation, the water main improvements on Wuthers Shore Drive.
So, putting things in perspective, just... So putting things in perspective, just the work that you did, or the town did, to generate this, okay? How many streets or how many miles did we?
So you did, you relayed nine streets of water main in contract four, I'm sorry, contract five. You relayed 15 streets in contract four, all new water main. The entire Cottage Hill has new water main. Winthrop Shore Drive, over a mile of water main there. Major, major improvements.
So what percentage of our total miles?
That $800,000 in debt, I mean, a water main break, an unexpected water main break can easily get to $200,000 like that, just for a repair, you know, depending on how quickly you can isolate things and how extensive it is. So these, these projects, although they reciprocate a debt obligation, a debt service, they're critical. You know, if you don't do these, you're going to be spending much, much more than $800,000.
So how much more is to be done in the streets in Winthrop?
Well, there's 46 miles of water main.
Jeff, trying to put things in perspective so people understand, you know?
How many more miles? I can tell you that in my time here, I probably touched about seven miles of it. Probably, you know? That doesn't mean that the other 39 miles necessarily needed today, but there's a good portion of that that's 75 to 100 years old.
But to next point, when you have a discussion about doing streets over, why do the street of the surface?
Well, that's what I was trying to say, it would be a policy decision. Do we start resurfacing streets knowing that you have a 100-year-old water main underneath it? I would say no, but obviously, we don't have an open checkbook either. So it's something to consider, equality of life, you know, people driving down the streets and pedestrians walking the streets and sidewalks, obviously, that's a priority as well. And maybe sometimes we will have to do work knowing that we have some, you know, substandards below it, we just can't afford to do it all every time, you know?
Just on that note, where you said, since you've been here, we've done so much. Before that, there was DPW superintendents that did a lot of work too. So in the last, you know, 40 years or 50 years, there's been quite a bit of road work in Winthrop. I remember growing up, there was always a street dug up in the summer and they were doing curb-to-curb.
But a lot of the streets that were dug up, in your, you know, to make an argument, a lot of it wasn't done, like Pauline Street. We resurfaced Pauline Street back in 2005, no infrastructure work was done. We redid the center back in the 90s, right? Not one piece of pipe was touched in those projects. So a lot of that work, a lot of that street work was done without utility improvements, unfortunately.
When they dug up the MWRA, when they brought down the water main down Washington and Pleasant and everybody's ceilings cracked and everything, was the infrastructure done with, during that time?
None of that was done? MWRA, that was their designated 24-inch main.
So they didn't do anything?
No, I think, I think we got some stuff out of it at the time. Elmont Street got relayed because they came off of Shirley Street, went down Elmont. Elmont, whoever was sitting in my position was able to get the water main redone on Elmont. I think some sections of Shirley Street might have got, you know, some things done. Now, I'm not sitting here saying that there was no, never no infrastructure work done. There was. There's a lot of, a lot of street work was, occurred without it as well, so, you know. It's going to be, it's got to be a continuous commitment, a continuous investment, because the cost of not doing the work is going to far outweigh the debt services, you know, to do it.
Any other questions?
That's all I got.
Thank you, Steve.
Speaking of the budget, we have a public hearing to open it up with comments about the budget.
I have one clarification.
Yes, sir.
Can I steal this time? There's one issue I forgot to mention in my budget presentation, which is, I'm sitting here thinking. Mike Clark is probably the, one of the lowest-paid employees in the police department and probably the one of the most overworked. We can't just bump up her pay, she's union contract and that's a whole union process. So we did ask the CFO and the town manager to see if we can relieve some pressure on her by hiring a part-time clerk next year. So just want to put it out there that she does all the billing for the police details, purchases, accounts payables, public records requests. Anything that comes through my office from myself and the deputy chief goes to her desk first, and it's a lot of work, certainly. So I just wanted to make the council aware of that, and I know I made the town manager and CFO aware of that as well. So thank you.
Anyone wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Bill Schmidt, Precinct Five, I'm here also to cheer the Board of Health. I just wanted to make a couple of points. What a pleasure the Board of Health had with working with Meredith this past year with the transition that's happening in that department. Also, to answer your question, Councilon Corey, Astrid from the Board of Health has taken some issues with the airport. She's gotten a lot of the noise data directly from passports, so she's going to be looking at that in depth. And she has talked to, I think, a couple of partners, helping doing some study on the particular matter. And also, just the, you've had to deal, right, frankly, with the board. When you get on the Board of Health, sometimes you don't know what you're going to be dealing with. You've had to deal with one of these hoarding issues. I understand some warning is coming, and I'd like to, the regent, teamwork with the chief, both chiefs, Al, the G, and the ISD, working with that. We actually did successfully resolve that concern in one of these houses, so the teamwork really does work well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard on the budget? Yes?
Just quickly, I just want, John Hunsen, Precinct Two, just wanted to mention that it might be wise to get a plan in place for the roads in terms of timing and priority, just to mitigate complaints and citizen issues like taking up, let's say, for example, my road that could use some resurfacing. On Lowell 65, if you take, no, I'm just kidding. Just say a plan in place, so that way you can beat, you can get ahead of the complaints and the requests.
Good point. Anyone else?
I just wanted to make a comment. So, you know, sitting here, listening to all of our public safety, I mean, I was actually exhausted listening to all the things that all of you do. You do it, you do it so well. You try very hard to keep within your level funding budgets. You ask for small little increases here and there that are so hugely necessary. And I just, I like to commend all of you. I think you all do a fabulous job, and I hope that the town manager, if there's anywhere, he can squeeze a little money here and there for each of your departments. I'm certainly 100% behind you. So thank you. Thank you all.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Here we go, and we'll close that part out. Our correspondents, they did receive a resignation. I think a lot of you have heard about it. Bob Carroll, who served, I believe, about four or five years on the planning board, something like that? Close to 10?
Close to 10.
Okay. He certainly did an outstanding job, and we appreciate, you know, unfortunately, I had to accept his resignation. I do accept it, but lightly. He certainly has given a lot of time and certainly a lot of effort in the planning board for the last 10 years. And we appreciate everything that he's done, and we wish him well. All right, committee reports, appointments, commissions and committees.
Appointments, commissions and committees met this evening, present with myself and Councilor Boncorry from the committee. Also present with the town clerk, Carla Vitale, Human Resources Director, Stacy, Councilor Farino and Council President Vecchia. On our agenda was the evaluation of the town clerk. We went over several items with the town clerk, got some other correspondence from town manager. And after a lot of discussion, we are recommending to the town council that we reappoint the town clerk for a three-year period effective July 1st, 2019, until June 30th, 2022. That was unanimous recommendation from the committee.
Okay, so it's from the committee, an appointment, it doesn't need a second, is that correct, Counselor?
Correct, we do it under appointments. Under appointments.
Yeah, we do that, okay. Precinct One neighborhood meeting.
Council President, my first council meeting, I mean, precinct meeting, was very well attended. We had a nice dialogue with the residents from my precinct, and it was a lot of questions and different things, and, you know, I tried to answer them with what I could. I think they were pleased with, you know, what I had to say, and I was glad they all came. It was about 20 people, but the majority of the people were from the end of Winthrop Street where they had the road construction last year. And it was a theme of complaints about the sidewalks that were poured, and they were not very pleased. And some of the other issues of how they tied into their homes and their driveways. And I know the town manager had addressed, you know, had, the assistant manager went down there, Mr. Rodriguez, and he took some pictures and we all, you know, looked at him and agreed that there's some issues with, with the construction that happened down there. And I think we need to do a site visit, maybe, or...
Yeah, because I've got some complaints about it.
Yeah, and maybe just go down there and maybe appease the neighbors a little bit more, or try to, you know, come up with a solution or something, because they were pretty adamant about their displeased, you know, that they were displeased with the construction in the way that it looks. And, you know, it wasn't just one planner, it was six or seven, so. And I realize that some of the issues are apparent around the rest of the town, some of the sidewalks that have been poured, so.
Yeah, no, we're aware of the issue. It seems like it had something to do with the mix of the concrete, but Steve's going to...
And actually, we met with the engineer, we met with the contractor. All of these pours, you know, were inspected. It turns out that the road salt is one of the biggest culprits. We had a very, very tough winter with, in a sense of heavy road salt use. Other communities, I did speak, DCI had the same issues up on Shore Drive. Spent takes a long time to cure. It takes really, you know, six months to 12 months to really fully cure. A lot of these areas that were scaling were poured at the latter part of the construction season. The heavy use of road salt is what is being blamed for the scaling of these sidewalks. Goes back a little bit probably to the vehicles that we're using, the softies. We can't really control the width of the spray on these. They're old, old vehicles. They actually spin based on, you know, they're attached to the, basically the drive shaft, they spin, the hydraulic spindle. So the road salt shoots. These newer vehicles have much, everything you can punch in, computer systems, and you can really drop the salt exactly where you need it. That's a partial problem, I'm not blaming it fully on the improvement that we have, but it certainly seems to be being pointed at rock salt. Primarily at the corners where the trucks are coming around the corners, rock salt's going up on the shoulders. Again, DCI, I spoke to Chelsea, DPW director, very similar situations. He also tried to go after a contractor, and they actually took borings of the sidewalks there and found salt concentrations in the upper levels of the cement. So that's what they're pushing there right now. I don't, I just want to, I don't want to say it's poor quality construction, I don't think that's fair to say. As far as the other complaint, but how they attach to public property.
Yeah, and it was when they asphalted into their driveway, because they had to make a cut. And, you know, some of the, some of the pitch of the sidewalks aren't appropriate to the step or, you know. So they had some issues that they were very articulate with, and they were very adamant that they wanted to resolve otherwise. They were going to take recourse, and I didn't want to go there. So, and I didn't want to, I wanted to see if we could resolve it in some manner. And, you know, and they're saying that their property values may be depreciated because of the, you know, the presence and the way it looks. And, you know, they had some legitimate qualms. And so, so I think we can resolve them, and I know with your expertise and the manager's capability of finding solutions, we can, we can make them whole in some manner.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Okay, Town Manager's report.
Okay, thank you very much. Just briefly, I think earlier tonight with the department heads speaking, it shows that the work of departments doesn't happen siloed in the departments themselves. It's issue-based, so like, we have a hoarding issue, we need kind of all hands on deck to deal with the hoarding issue. So we have a fair amount of time that we're seeing overlap between our departments on a fair amount of subjects. So in the coming years, we're going to kind of continue to revisit where responsibilities and duties lie, because as evidenced by this, just an issue that isn't a huge issue of hoarding, but with the nature of our aging and contracting population, like this will hit a place like Winthrop harder than it will hit other places. So we're starting to look at these issues as department heads and interdepartmental rather than individual departments. So, I mean, it's showing the progress of the department heads here, kind of taking down the silos and individual offices and working together on a lot of these topics. So I give them a lot of credit because they're doing the work, but I think across the town, we're trying to look at a fair amount of these things on an issue basis rather than just a departmental basis. So one thing that came up about, let's say, three months ago, was I had asked you to request that the TSAC and TruStation Advisory Committee have a joint meeting concerning Lime Bikes. So they had a meeting about, in early April. I was recently provided with the recommendations out of that joint meeting. At this point, most of the recommendations are keyed to state regulations changing on this, on e-bikes and those types of things. At this point, I would like to see some service of Lime in town. I would like us to have some type of availability of options. So in these recommendations, part of them are streamlining some of the places where they're going to put the bikes and where they are picking up bikes and our usefulness and things like that. Once I can get some of those things entered into an MOA with them, I'm okay with going forward with this project. So that's something that should happen over the next week. I want to... Yes, so not scooters, but the way legally they fall, they fall within like a motorized bike instead of a normal bicycle. So there's different regulations with them. If the state had acted on this earlier, we could have had these things settled outside of our hands earlier in the year, but they haven't yet. So much of our recommendations that came out of these two committees points to when state law changes. But at this point, I'm much more comfortable making the bikes available so that we have some semblance of a system set up, because I don't want to get in the position that we miss an entire season because of our kind of delay in deciding what direction we want to go. They will eventually use this to push for scooters, that's their next step. But being in Denver last week, I saw Lime and Bird Ones all over the place there. It's just kind of a way of life in cities now. So something to be, continue to be revisited, but once I sort out this MOA with them, where those will be out on the street in most likely the next two weeks, I would say. There's a rabies clinic this Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 in the old DPW building at 243R Winthrop Street. It is $10 per animal, cats and dogs, and there will be applications for dog licenses available. The public boat ramp is expected to open on Memorial Day. And next week, the, in, some of the town departments have gotten together to do something called Winthrop Engages on Wednesday, May 15th. I talked about this at the Spring Forum. A good day, or a good evening, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Coming School for the community to come together and learn about different ways to become engaged civically. So you can talk with department heads, you're going to be able to talk with some of the committees that are participating and get some insight... that are participating and get some insight into what's happening at our committees because we do give a fair amount of work to the committees and wanna continually have people that are both engaged with it but also like looking to learn about it more, so we can set you all up with lists in the future of people who are active in the community who are looking to do some of these things. So that is something that is exciting as well. And beyond that, you, you know, I think these meetings with the department heads have been, although they take up time in your meetings, I feel like they've been important because it's the public nature of these discussions. One note, skipping forward a little bit, in terms of new business, just to tie things up a little bit, the first six of the seven should all be put to Finance Committee and the la, the seventh is something that I believe would go to Appointments Committee and they would report back on that one. But just to save you a second, instead of having to read every single one, you can probably omnibus them for yourselves, but that's all from me.
Yes, question, I, I don't know, six weeks ago, eight weeks ago, whatever, talking with, about Mr. Riley's concerns and a lot of the neighbors and I can't agree more with past President Riley and I had asked that a map be brought before us at this meeting.
Yep.
Again, to me, maybe I'm just being really simplistic, it just seems like those houses are budding family dollar, our residences, and it's pretty clear cut. Obviously, we don't have a map to vote on. When do we have that map to vote on?
We've entered the map into the Planning Board process and the discussion there so they can make a decision about what map they would like to propose to the Town Council. I understand your request and that was the appropriate nature that we thought could foster the discussion concerning the maps was putting it with the Planning Board to then make a recommendation that they vote on that would come up to the Council as well. So at the Planning Board meeting last week, they were presented with variations on the map to have actual discussions about, so that it's not just individual interpretations of the map, there can be some consensus built around it, because I feel like the issue that we're having right now is a lot of individual interpretations of maps over history and the whole point of this process is try to bring people together to come up to a consensus for one map to decide the direction of the community. And it cannot just be the individuals that are impacted by the map or our most local constituents, it needs to be a community-wide thing, or we at least, at least have to give the community the opportunity to participate in the process.
So the Planning Board had that meeting last week, correct?
Yep.
What was their next meeting?
They had the special meeting on the thirtieth that they introduced and they have a meeting May thirteenth. That'll be on the agenda.
But no matter what they recommend, it's up to this Council.
It's up to the Council to vote.
But they still have to make their recommendation. The recommendation's gotta come from the Planning Board. We can't just pick a map out of the air and make a decision on it. It has to come from the Planning Board.
So May thirteenth is the meeting?
So the goal is to have it, some type of recommendation from them at their next meeting.
And just for clarification, because I, I know you're talking about the bikes and the Lime Bikes and the e-bikes.
Yep.
So there's some issues with the, with the state ordinances or whatever concerning the e-bike, so, and you wanna have something in place. So when you mean something in place, do you mean the e-bikes regardless of the ordinance?
Yep.
Okay.
They're not, they're not putting normal bikes.
Well, that's what I thought that was, so, okay.
Yep.
And the locations are gonna be very clear and...
We're gonna try to clear them up. It, it, that's the difficult thing with the nature of a company like this, is that they don't believe in like the corralling system, like how Hubway is, or not Hubway, Blue Bikes in town, how they have their stations and things like that. They don't believe in that because they're trying to decentralize the stations, so in any direction that you walk, there could be a bike close instead of having to walk to a specific location to get a bike. Is there a mindset about it? So it's a little bit different of a mentality about it, but I want to try to enter into the M O A, some controls over it so that we don't just have bikes littered all over the place. That's, that's the intent of it, to hold them more accountable.
Is it similar to what it was last year?
Yep. And then the, I mean, yeah, there's some other issues in terms of people under eighteen.
I just wanted to make sure it was the e-bikes, not regular bikes, because I...
Yeah, 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 no, no regular bike, yeah.
Regardless of the regulation, you hope to have in place some sort of M O A so we could have the e-bikes on the...
Absolutely.
So Austin, the Harbor Day was, I think, tentatively scheduled for June eleventh?
Eleventh, correct, yes.
Have we firm that up, because a lot of organizations are asking, because that had a lot to do with the governor?
Yes, we have firm that up with the state level offices, so that's based off their availability more so than our end, so.
Okay.
June eleventh is gonna be that day, it's gonna be the ribbon cutting and it's also going to be the local Harbor Day as well. And we're gonna try to, so this may be something that's different than last year and I know this may not be received super great. Instead of providing the hot dogs and hamburgers, we may be going the direction of inviting some food trucks to the locations, so people will have to pay for the food, but we're hoping to provide like some different foods there that aren't necessarily accessible to the town all the time and show them that Winthrop is potentially accepting to those types of food delivery services so that maybe they could come here and help us near the beaches during the summer or something like that, so. It's kind of like a, see how it goes in that instance.
Okay, any other questions to the...
Yes, Council President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to circle us back to the dog park where three weeks ago you had given us an update that you guys were doing a title search.
Yep.
What progress has been made in those three weeks?
The title search is ongoing.
Okay, when do we anticipate that to be complete?
I, I don't know.
Okay, how long does the title search take?
Fair amount of time when it was, it was federal level property and it was also an industrial site, so there's a real lack of clarity there, so they've been working very hard and we've been checking in with them frequently to try to get it. As Assistant Mayor Rodriguez brought up multiple times, that is step one of multiple of a potentially multi-hundred thousand dollar process of getting a park, dog park in that location, so it's step one of many, but it will take time.
And we have absolutely no idea how long it will take before we have any progress report on this?
So we, Dave has worked very hard to try to provide an amenable solution outside of that one site. That site will take time. That site is unique and has not been necessarily solely used for a park for its history, so to operate on that area is going to take a fair amount of time and that's what Dave has done, I think, a commendable job of trying to inform the community about for a long period of time. We have offered a potential solution that wasn't received particularly well, so we haven't pursued that one, but it came up earlier tonight, so Coughlin Park could be a potential location for another one, but we want the community to be on board with this, so the community is calling for us to continue looking at this and we will continue looking at it and as soon as we have the reports back, we will provide them.
Well, I do expect progress on this title search and I'll continue to ask about it.
Okay.
Anyone else? Nope, okay. School Department report, we had a school committee meeting last night, May sixth. The solar panel installation will be starting within the next week or so. I guess they have all the clearances for the cranes and all that good stuff and they're gonna be taking up some areas, a couple of parking spaces in the back of the building and they hope to have all of the panels at least loaded onto the roof within the next week, week and a half. The superintendent announced that Charlie passes would be available to middle and high school students that qualify. The Winthrop High School Robotics Club was recognized last night for their participation two weeks ago and they all received citations. And the highlight of the evening was that the Winthrop School Committee voted to name the track at Miller Field after Pat McGee. Pat McGee was the, not only a coach but a teacher and involved in many, many activities throughout the years in Winthrop. The Winthrop Playmakers, she was very active at the, is still is, I think, at the Holy Rosary Church down at Point Shirley, so it was a unanimous decision to name it after her. So that's it for the School Department report. There's no old business. Under new business, we have some year-end housekeeping items under Finance. I'm going to read them all, all has to be sent to the Finance Committee. Town Council to vote to modify the general fund budgets in the amount of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight sixty-one. A motion to refer to Finance?
We're gonna, I think we can take all of these at once.
Okay. Town Council transfers twenty-four thousand, five hundred from the General Stabilization Fund to replenish the General Fund Special Article F Y fourteen Derelict Properties. Town Councils to transfer ten thousand from the General Fund to replenish General Fund Special Article Pest Control. Town Council transfers three hundred and eighteen thousand, oh, three hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-five cents from inactive scholarships to the Rona Mail Scholarship. Town Council reduces supplemental school department operating budget by fifty thousand for F Y nineteen, unused portion previous transfers from October two thousand and eighteen. And the Town Council vote to declare several vehicles for surplus through the approval auction site.
Motion to refer to Finance?
It is the second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Yes, have it. To continue to be very transparent, I think tonight we heard a story from our police, from our fire chief relative to the Fire Department and the age of, of the staff and their knowledge and so forth, and the fire chief has asked us to consider keeping him on beyond the age of sixty-five. In order to do that, it has to go to the state legislature, the home rule petition. So tonight, I'm going to make a motion, but we're gonna refer to and discuss it at the next meeting. So I will read the motion and will pass the gavel to the Vice President of the Council, and you can have that too. Submitted by Council President Beckia, that the Town Council of the town of Winthrop hereby authorize the filing of a petition with the General Court for special legislation, authorizing the town to continue the employment of Fire Chief past the mandatory retirement age of sixty-five as set forth below, provided however that the General Court may clerical or editorial changes of form only to the proposed special act unless the Council approves amendments prior to the enactment by the General Court and to authorize the Town Council to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. An act authorizing the town of Winthrop to continue the employment of Fire Chief Paul E. Flanagan. Section one, notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary, Paul E. Flanagan, Fire Chief of the town of Winthrop, may continue to serve in that position until June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. The date of his retirement or the date he is relieved of his duties by the Town Manager of the town of Winthrop, which ever occurs first, provided however that he is mentally and physically capable of performing the duties of this office. The Town Manager may, at the expense of the town, require that Paul E. Flanagan may be examined by an impartial physician on or about his sixty-fifth birthday and each year thereafter, or hereafter, on or about his birthday to determine such capability. No further deductions shall be made from regular compensation of Paul E. Flanagan pursuant to Chapter thirty-two of the Massachusetts General Laws for Service subsequent retirement allowances equal to the allowance that he would have been entitled had he retired on that date. Paul E. Flanagan will continue to be a member in service under Chapter thirty-two, Section one, for the purposes of eligibility for benefits under Chapter thirty-two, Section seven, nine, or one hundred during any period after his sixty-fifth birthday while serving as Fire Chief. Section two, this act will, will, will take effect upon passage.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Council President Beckia, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion, please. Councilor Farino.
I, I know we've reached out to Copeland and Page on this and we haven't gotten clarification or response back from them, so based on that, I'd like to ask that we have, I have council privilege and that I move to postpone this vote until the next meeting on May twenty-first so we can get some clarification.
Right, Councilor Farino has invoked his privilege to postpone this until the next meeting. Hearing that, there's no further discussion, this will be on the agenda for May twenty-first meeting, thank you.
You can keep the gavel.
Council President?
We'll do the first thing we will do is...
Pardon me? First appointment, will I do the one from the committee first?
Yes, that's what we're gonna do.
Okay. There's a, there's a, there's a motion out of committee, there's a recommendation out of the Finance Committee, out of the Appointments Committee to, to reappoint Council Clerk Carla Vitale-Lacanti for a three-year period effective July first, two thousand and nineteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Coming out of committee does not need a second, any discussion on the motion?
Council Vice Chair?
Yes.
I'll accuse myself from this discussion for the record.
Council Lacanti is accusing himself of the discussion, any other further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Further appointments, Council President Beckia.
Okay, submitted by Council President Beckia, motion of the Council accept the appointment made by Town Council President Beckia to appoint Susan Smith as a member of the Commission on Disability, or take any other action there too?
There's a motion from Council President Beckia, seconded by Councilor Boncory. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Councilor, Council President Beckia.
Motion that Town Council accept the appointment made by Town Council President Beckia to appoint Stephen Rogers as a member of the Historical Committee, or take any other action there too?
Motion by Council President Beckia, seconded by Councilor Boncory. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, none, the ayes have it. Council President?
Thank you. Public comment. Tom Riley.
Let me get a little bit closer, I can show you what I... I wanna, I just wanna, how awful that presentation was before the Planning Board the other night. How the Planning Board can make any idea of how to proceed or take a step forward with all of these blurry pictures? This, this one, these two here. The task was to draw the boundary lines of the Senate Business District as they currently exist. So what do we find out? I showed you tonight how it goes behind the triangular business, cross and down, back over. Here's the proposal from the consultant. Come up Somerset Avenue, go in, just behind that triangular building a little bit, along the back of the two houses over here, take a right angle turn onto Cottage Park Road, take another right angle turn, take a right angle turn up my driveway and then take another right angle turn between my, between the houses above me and the bank parking lot. That's what the Planning Board got. The Planning Board got all this other stuff. The Planning Board should have a map, the plot plan that we showed you before, draw a line on it, that's the proposal, sit down, what's in it, what should be in it, is there anything that's not included in it that should be in it? Is there anything in here that shouldn't be in it? And then make a recommendation to you. Instead, they've got all of this stuff that they say, I don't know how the Planning Board begins to even do what you've asked them to do with what they've been presented by the Council. This is ridiculous. I mean, this is, it just seems to me that there's just this thrust to want to put those houses in to the, into the Business District, in spite of whatever's been, been, been looked at, in spite of people that have taken example of it. Terry went through every single zoning vote that's ever been taken in the town to come up with his determination. Al Agui looked at all the maps, the plot plans and so forth. He took a, two different approaches, two different kinds of, of methods of coming to it. They both came to the same conclusion, yet we get this from a paid, highly paid consultant. Why the same person who drew the map that started the controversy in the same place is now trying to figure out how to get us out of this morass is just beyond me. Thank you.
Anyone else?
July fourth, Thursday night, the fireworks, the T-shirts are in, the letters for donations are out, so get the T-shirts while they last.
Jack?
Jack, down in precinct three, I believe. I'm reading a memo from Mr. Faison that was put out November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen and it involves the Senate Business District. And, you know, I guess it's some instructions for people living in the town to understand how this infrastructure plan is, is doing. I'd like to ask on Mr. Beckia if there is a, a committee, a Senate Business Committee that was supposed to be formed at some point.
Sure is.
Is there?
Yes.
Is it on the books yet?
It's a manager's committee, so it's not subject to open meeting law.
Oh, all right, so my question is, can we get a revised memo to bring the, the rest of the town up to date on what's been happening concerning the appointment? concerning the appointments, the committee, the peer review, uh, the integration, the, an updated financial plan?
Absolutely.
Does all that exist?
Yep.
So, can we get another memo?
Absolutely, they're finishing up their report. So, once the report is finished, I'll make it public.
And that will be?
I'm not positive when, they're still working on?
Who's going to report?
The Management Committee along with Assistant Town Manager Dick Rodriguez.
So, but we're not privy to that, please.
The report will?
Confidential.
No, it's not confidential, it's not finished. When it's finished, it will be made public.
All right, I want to, uh, continue, uh, this, uh, situation that has put, uh, people in the center in such, um, dismay. I don't know how you could ask the Planning Board to come up with a, an idea of, of a zone or, or property lines. I saw the same, uh, information that, uh, Mr. Riley was just talking about. It's, uh, at this point, uh, more fuzzy than it was, uh, in two thousand and twelve when the Planning Board, uh, decided to make a master plan, uh, to do some, uh, changing of the zoning laws in the Town of Winthrop. I don't know, I don't know how to describe, uh, these meetings with the Planning Board. I, I wish a lot more people would attend these Planning Board meetings. As I've said many times, they're chaotic. And the proof that they are chaotic is what we're going through right now. Nobody knows where the property lines are. You have arguments with developers and neighbors that haven't been resolved in, uh, seven years. Why does it take seven years to resolve, uh, property lines? Started this process in two thousand and twelve. I hope somebody has the wherewithal, and I, I think we spent thirty thousand dollars on this, uh, form and place person to come in and give us, uh, paperwork that makes it more fuzzy than it was seven years ago. I'm wondering why, uh, we didn't hire a surveyor for the thirty thousand dollars. I don't know how much it costs to survey, uh, a group of, uh, buildings or premises when we find out that number. So, we, you know, so, so, so somebody can take, uh, the bull by the tail here and, and get this thing done. Thirty thousand dollars to, to see some fuzzy maps that, uh, don't make any sense. I don't know if, if anybody's seen these maps. Doesn't make any sense to spend thirty thousand dollars for nothing. Nothing was resolved for putting that thirty thousand dollars on the table for a person to come up with this ridiculous, uh, map layover or something like that. Doesn't make any sense to anybody, and I hope you agree with that. Let's find out how much it costs to survey the properties. Let's find out, uh, you know, who owns what and where. I'd appreciate it if you would, uh, consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. Anyone else?
Who's come in here? Hearing none, I'll let the public comment on the public relations. We have an opening, as we heard this evening, uh, with, with the resignation of Bob Carroll. There is an opening on the Planning Board.
Already put in for it.
We have the library, we have an opening on the library trust.
And we have an opening, uh, for the, uh, for a member of the, uh, Library Trustees. In fact, uh, at the next meeting, there'll be a joint meeting of the Library Trustees and the Council to elect a temporary person as a trustee. May twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, the blessing dedication of the Irish Memorial on Deer Island at ten AM. Out on Deer Island, I guess today they, um, they were out there putting the, uh, the Stone Memorial up on the island. Michael Carney and his crew.
Celtic cross.
What is it?
A Celtic cross.
Celtic.
Celtic cross.
Celtic cross.
Oh, it's a Celtic.
Celtic.
I thought you said Celtics, right?
Celtics.
As long as it's not a ruined just? And contributions to the Rona Mail Scholarship is still being accepted for the class of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, any, uh, comments from the Council? Hearing none, I'll let the term of the motion?
Motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.